Well, Madam Clerk. I don't think we have before, yeah, it's, I'm a little rusty. Alrighty, so yeah, the purpose of the study session this evening is to talk about marijuana ordinance for the city. So I guess before I'll turn it over to Dean and Anthony to fill in any gaps momentarily here, but I just kinda wanted to bring us everyone up to speed on what we've discussed so far, make sure that we're still all on the same page about what consensus we've reached at this point here. And so we've been talking about this for what seems like about fifteen, twenty years or so. No, but yeah, a few years now here. And so I think that from all the study sessions we've had, from what we've sussed out with other communities, seen happen through the courts and all, that at this point, you know, we've come to the consensus that we're generally okay with growing and processing facilities along with medical and recreational grow and processing for both ends. And for anyone watching at home that is not inclusive of retail, so there will not be any dispensaries, or at least have not been discussed at this point. And so we had talked also about licensing, how we were going to go about that, what number was correct for us. And I think as of the last meeting, what was discussed was the recommendation being that we do not limit the number of licenses, it will help us out on the, I guess, litigation front for the application process. But by restricting it through our zoning ordinances and ensuring that, right, we've able to keep it into a finite area where, yes, I think we've discussed, I can't remember if it was both I one and I two, I actually have the map being by chance. So just what we had discussed so far. And so we've gotten some of the information back that people have had questions about that at this point, we would, for any of these facilities outside of the, the building improvements that are made in the up, general upkeep and things like that, it is five thousand dollars per year per license that the city would be receiving. And there is also, just in state law, built-in setbacks to where that none of these facilities can be located within five hundred feet of anything zoned residential, or within a thousand feet from any schools or churches for that matter. So a lot of the territory in our city is pretty much squeezed out just from those restrictions. But from what we had kinda batted around was some, the locations, both north of King Road on the west side of Jefferson, and then from that same token, south of Van Horn, and that Van Horn-West Jefferson corridor on the west side of West Jefferson there as well. So leaving the waterfront development areas outside of the purview of this here. So I think that in terms of next steps and what we might need to accomplish at this meeting would be kind of honing in on what we can all find palatable for the geographic location piece of this. And then, yeah, I think that that's sort of the big next step for us before we get into anything further, whether it be through resolutions, having some planning commission review and things of that nature. So with that, I will actually, I'll turn it over to Dean here once he's done passing things out, but him and Anthony to fill in any gaps that I may have missed in my very non-legal explanation of where we're at so far. I mean, non-legal as in, not that it is illegal, but that I have no legal background whatsoever, so it wasn't the most formal explanation there. So yeah, with that, Dean, I guess I'll kick it over to you here. See if I missed anything.
No. Alright, so.
Alright, settled.
No, you, actually, you're very, very thorough. So you have the zoning map in, in front of you, and that is the, the primary thing we would need to round out what's left in the ordinance. There's a couple little minor changes. There were some language we're gonna tighten up to make sure there's no out, outside grows, which really they don't have the ability to do that anyways, but we wanna make sure it's, it's really clear, because nobody wants to see anybody hauling their plants out in the summer, just to, it'd just be disruptive and everything. So that's one thing. So the other thing that you have in front of you, it's labeled option C. So you have, you have total course discretion as far as zoning. The, the general feedback I've gotten has been the, there's a couple key things that, and general council is, is interested and isn't interested. One, only interested in industrial type of property. Not interested in the waterfront revitalization area being infringed upon. And, and then, so when, when you start doing that, and if you look at your map, the black and the gray areas are the industrial areas. The, if you went with, we're just gonna allow it in industrial areas, anything zoned I one or I two, then those areas, it would be permitted with the five hundred foot exception or whatever. The large dark area at the north end of your map is, of course, the Rock Corry, and then the Dan O property and stuff like that. And then just south of that is the Fritz property or the Kirkstra property as we now have it. And then if you continue south, that, of course, is the, the Chrysler plant, and then when you get south of Van Horn, or Vreeland, no, Van Horn, when you get south of Van Horn, then that's where the other properties are that are industrial, that there, there may be an opportunity or whatever, at least you guys should discuss. And then, of course, the lighter gray areas where we currently have some activity of this nature would be the light gray that's, I shaded it pink and circled it in red for you. And that would be north of King across from the Crown Holden and Clough property. The, one of the suggestions, and this is a suggestion, I'm not telling, of course, what, you know, but one of the suggestions is if we worded the area, we, we could make it east of the CN, east of the Eastern Moesian Railroad tracks, west of Jefferson, and industrial, anything zoned industrial, and that would limit it to those two areas you have circled in red. So that is an idea, that is something that kinda keeps it from impinging on any neighborhoods, any areas that you guys have made pretty clear that you're not interested in putting any grower processing entities in there. And then, that's it. I don't have anything else.
Anthony, did we miss anything?
No, that pretty much covered it. There's the draft ordinance you've all seen, and to be clear, it is a draft. So if anyone sees it in the public, it is draft state, so don't rely on it whatsoever. It's subject to change. As well as if any conclusions are made as far as where they're gonna be located on the map, until it's final and published as a final document of where it's gonna be. Same goes to the general public out there. Don't rely on comments of where it may or may not go. Don't go by property and any type of reliance until it's a final publication.
Appreciate the disclaimer, yeah. Well, so I guess now at this point, I'll open it up to the council here, if anyone has any questions, thoughts, concerns, ideas, whether it be pertaining to the zoning portion or just the draft ordinance as a whole. Councilwoman Bond, corrects?
Yeah, I just have one question about the waterfront revitalization district across from where they're growing and processing now. Has there been any kind of feedback from anybody that does not want that area to ever become part of this also, or that if somebody wanted to build a processing center there, or growth center there, there would not be allowed? I mean, that's a huge site. Is there any sentiment, why they wouldn't allow it there on the, on the waterfront?
So I think when we had talked about it before, it was more just the thought of trying to do what we can to keep things more commercial oriented on the waterfront, not necessarily marijuana business related, but just a general commercial retailer seeing what that is. Nobody on, I guess, the, the east side of the property at least has reached out to me. I don't know if said anything about City Hall about having any interest in doing so. I mean, from that same token, we haven't, you know, actively approached.
About it from people that do grow, when, you know, and they've asked me, and I said, you know, we haven't seen a copy of the ordinance yet. And I didn't know, you know, that's a limited area down there. It's not by any residential or churches or, you know, schools or whatever. So I just don't wanna limit what, you know, too much. But I don't want a whole town of, you know.
Sure, exclusively that, yeah.
Marijuana town of USA either.
Right.
So, you know, I just didn't know if there was, you know, any feedback from anybody else, but just the thought.
Yeah, no, no, and that's a good point. I mean, I, like I said, I personally haven't had anyone reach out to inquire about doing so on those properties. But I mean, I, I guess for me, a little bit would be, I'd rather err a little bit more on the side of caution. If it goes well with the areas that we've defined, then maybe we can talk about it from there and building. I'd rather, I guess, have it grow than to have it have to compact for that matter, yeah.
Because you can't tell somebody they can do it.
Yeah, and then come around, yeah, yep.
So if they do approach you, what would they have to do to, if they do approach you, like they've approached me, what would they have to do to get that change, to, to, you know, do something like that? We've only got it on the west side of Jefferson versus wanting to do it on these. What, what's the, you know, what's the process they'd have to go through? Crown says, hey, I wanna cut off, you know, twenty-five acres to this growth center. What would, what would they have to do to do that?
It'd be a zoning change, and, and it would come back to this body. So it'd go back through the planning and come back to this body to make a change, and then we'd have to change.
There are arteries for them to do that, if they wanted to. Okay, alright, I just wanted to know how.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good. I hadn't thought of that. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it, thanks.
Councilman Cabot?
Yeah, um, just a quick question for an option C on that, on that north strip there. That's between the tracks and Jefferson, going up to, you know, it looks like Sibley Road. There's a church on Sibley in Trenton, over by Detroit Street. Is that, is that going to be problematic in the sense of, is that within a thousand feet? Do we know? Looked pretty close, but I don't know.
It might be close.
Microphone, microphone. Oh, no.
It might be close, but existing businesses should not be a topic for discussion.
I'm talking about the zoning.
Because right now, it's a trucking company.
Yeah, right now, it's.
At the north end of Sibley and Jefferson's Trucking Company. He sells out to somebody.
He would still have to comply with.
Still gotta comply, and whoever buys is gonna have to do their due diligence.
I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the zoning area.
Yep, you still have to follow up with.
So you have to fall with.
And, and the state is liable to change or modify whatever they're doing along the way, who knows?
I don't think that church falls within a thousand feet of that. I mean, that's, it's like tracks, a couple blocks. I think it's in that second block off of there.
Well, when you go over those sets of tracks, or, I mean, right there is.
We could get one fixed, but not all of them.
Alright, my, my other question is, and kind of along the same line, so if anywhere in these proposed districts, we have a, an operation that sets up shop. And what happens if we have a, let's just say we have a daycare that, that sets up shop within a thousand, you know, say, seven hundred feet away? How does that, how does that work?
I don't believe a daycare would be able to set up in an industrial zone. I don't, that's not compliant with the zoning.
No, but you do have, down on the south end, you do have some, on the other side, you do have some, you know, one-family, two-family residential. I don't know if you could put, like, somebody operating, because I think the limit is what, like, under six kids in a house can still be considered a daycare facility?
Would still have to be five hundred feet from any residence.
Okay, okay. Just wanna.
No, no, that's fine.
Just wanna throw that out there, see how that.
I'm sorry, Scott.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I guess with that line of thought, so if they're already there, and somebody petitions to put a daycare in that subdivision, and it comes within that five hundred feet, it's not them then, it's that person that has to, sorry, you can't do your daycare there?
Right, they wouldn't be able to.
Right, I mean.
Push somebody out, but.
I'm just, just wondering, just wanna throw it out there in case, so.
Right. With five, you put a lot of faith in me in catching that. With, with five hundred feet from residential, that's already the built-in buffer, so they wouldn't even be able to get a daycare within the five hundred feet buffer that's in place.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, it's not like a business could set up after the fact, because we'd have to have a new residential district zoned within that five hundred. The scenario you were talking about.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're, we're okay there. He's seen you play catch.
Do you have anything else?
Not at this point.
Oh, Councilwoman Faid.
Yeah, so on, on, on page fifteen, item number eleven, it's talking about control and mitigation of odors and so forth, and I'm just wondering who is going, who regulates that, who tests for that? Is that the, our ordinance officer, or is the plant required to put out reports of how they're environmentally affecting the air around them? Or what is that process for knowing whether or not the odors are harmful to the environment?
Dean or Anthony, when you guys want to take that.
I can tell you that the current establishments we have in town do not have to, they don't provide any report, however, they are inspected by the state, and they have to meet all the state guidelines for, as far as filtration and what they, I don't know, filtration, cleaning of the air, or whatever. So that, that's all handled by the, the state, in my experience, at least walking through their facilities. All of that is pre-inspected, the security is inspected and handled, and it's gotta be to their standards.
Okay, so if a resident felt like they were smelling something, had a complaint, they would go through that similar process of contacting Eagle and.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be actually no different than the way odor elimination or, or the attempt at odor elimination with the trash hill, similar.
Okay, thank you. I also just, when I was reading this, and now that it's in print form, just a general, I don't know if it's the the type of document and how it transferred, but on my copy on my computer, it came off where a lot of the words were smushed together, and I think it's the formatting issue, so if someone just wants to be careful of that, there was a lot of words that were capitalized, not sure they all needed to be, some of the words were kinda smushed together and just, you know, making it a readable document. I, I didn't get a chance to read the printed copy, but maybe it came out a lot better. But just looking over some of those things, and as far as the zoning, you know, my goal and intent of the waterfront revitalization district is to get something more community based, you know, interaction with the community, and that's not necessarily a growing facility in that area. But I'm wondering on this option C, I, I feel like it helps define it, because, you know, like, if we put it in one of these other areas, there's parks, there's residential, so we could say it's there, but it automatically kind of falls off anyway. So limiting is okay, but I'm not sure why we wouldn't put it in that business district by Kirkstra and Fritz. That whole section there. I can't see, just south of King Road, that little square there. Why, why we couldn't include that portion? So it's a, it's like a, you know, warehousing, there's lots of different types of manufacturing that goes on back there, so. Yeah, thank you, that's what it's called, yeah. So I don't know, I, I.
Yeah, there's no reason that something couldn't go back there. I thought that was included.
Well, if we say I one and I two, that's automatically included, but if we're gonna, you know, try to help people understand that it's only in these two areas because of residential anyway, and we're gonna rule that out, I mean, I, I don't really see where we'd have to rule out that Kirkstra area, that industrial parkway.
It complies.
Yeah, I think so.
If, if, if I might add, the, the, one of the, one of your options actually was, would have been option A and B, which I didn't provide to you. I'll give those to you, but if you went with the broad, it's permitted with, with the state setbacks of I one and I two, you, you would, I mean, process of elimination, the Rock Corry is gonna be.
Yeah, you're not gonna go there anyway, right.
The whole Chrysler area, not an issue. The only thing I, I personally would recommend is, i- if you went with that, make sure that it doesn't go east of Jefferson, because if, if by some crazy chance, because there's a chance that industrial property would be permitted east of Jefferson under certain circumstances, it would not, in my opinion, and I'm not the attorney, but my opinion, it would keep us away from any issues if we later have industrial type of work being done east of Jefferson, we wouldn't wanna muddy the waters, you know what I'm saying? Where, if you don't wanna go east of Jefferson, say it now, and, you know, address anything else later, but don't leave that to where two years from now you open.
I can't.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I definitely am for not crossing Jefferson on the east side at all. West of Jefferson, yeah.
So what, yeah, would it be at that point, east, east of Fort, east of Fort Street and west of West Jefferson?
No, but I think she's.
Nothing east of Jefferson.
You're talking about where Kirkster is and like the old Dan O property and all that.
Corner of Fort Street and King Road.
King Road, on both sides, where Dan O used to be and all that open spot where years ago they were gonna build a Home Depot.
Right.
Which, I guess, yeah, I don't see, I mean, if it falls within the state guidelines, I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Yeah, I'm open to it.
I mean, you've got, you've got residential on Dickinson Street there, but that would eliminate that area anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I, you know, that might help put a little bit more on that west side.
Probably put a little bit of a setback north of Harrison. Like, just be from the state law, I think.
I think the biggest part would be, in my opinion, is the Dan O property that, you know, it's there, nobody's jumped up and down and said they wanna do anything there. But yeah, where Kirkster is, I don't see them doing anything with it, and as you get farther into the industrial park, it gets closer to residential, so it'll be out, but, I mean, would we have.
I mean, we specify industrial area, but they still have to meet the state requirements before they can ever go in any of them, right?
Correct, you could say all industrial, but they still have to meet the buffer zones. So what, MRTMA is the recreational side. As clear as it can be, what is clear is it regulates time, place, and manner. So you guys can select the place, and so this is your opportunity to decide where the place is gonna be. And like Dean said, you don't wanna say it's gonna be there and then change your mind down the road, because then that will cause greater legal issues. So you're better off determining an area now, and maybe if it's smaller, it might be better, and then you can grow. Or if you just say it's all industrial, it's all industrial, but it still have the buffers included. So I think that, that if, for simplicity sake, just to kinda summarize that, that would make it any I one, I two, east of Fort Street and west of West Jefferson.
Right.
Does that sound okay?
Right.
Does that sound right?
Right.
Okay, and is that pretty much what this option A slash B is on the map? Okay, so some of the highlights.
That eliminates the DTE energy area too, then, too.
Yeah.
Just to let people know.
Yeah, McClellan.
And McClellan that eliminates so far, and DTE, but the Monsanto site would be.
The other side of solution.
Yep.
Solution, just to put things in perspective.
Yep, yeah, that side of it, good, yeah, and down by Hoover.
So option C is really just the, the smaller starting version of that, and then maybe we could expand it to option B later, or AB later. Okay, so we gotta decide that. And then the other question I have is about, same page fifteen, number eight. We talked a little bit about sign restrictions, and it's talking about, you know, words or descriptions, drawings of a marijuana paraphernalia, and maybe the plant and all that sort of thing, but will they be able to put the name of their business out? Like, I know some business names look like, don't look like they're marijuana facilities, but yet they are, I can't, and I'm, I can't think of a name of a business, but, you know, like House of, yes, I saw that billboard, actually. So can they put Words, House of Dank on there, because people.
Happy Gardener.
Have, yeah, things like that. Are words allowed, or any kind of signage? I didn't think any signage was allowed, but. Yeah.
They could do signage, but, but, yeah, because it's a grow and processing facility, they're not selling to the general public, so they probably won't advertise the same way as you'd see the other places. So my assumption is, a lot of these people will put a very small sign for. So my assumption is a lot of these people will put a very small sign for shipping and receiving purposes only. They're not going to have huge advertisements.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to accomplish in that part of it is we don't want a big neon sign on the side of the building, but in all likelihood, they're not going to do that anyways.
Well, but it could be an opportunity for them to raise awareness of their other location that they sell is what I'm wondering. And I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Now I see what you're saying. Like, you know, let's, let's, we use the House of Dank. So yeah, you can't buy it here because we don't allow it, but advertise on the side of their building. So we don't want them to even use it as a billboard, right?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah.
Yeah.
So are you saying that you would put a, a sign ordinance on those businesses? Or that vis, that category of business?
Well, for this, for a marijuana grower, I would think so. I mean, I don't mind a small thing over a door so that the truck knows it made it to the right facility versus some other facility. But, you know, um, I believe we are allowing, um, so I, I was reading downtown because we were, you know, studying it for some other reason. But the downtown can have a certain side on the front and then they can have a sign, like one sign all the way down the side of one building, a certain size and that sort of thing. So it didn't really mention, uh, anything other than just, you know, like a plant or a device that you would use. So I wasn't sure how we all felt about signage. We wanted to be a little more restricted.
Legality of putting a sign ordinance on this. The city does not have a sign ordinance.
Doesn't the DDA? There's only allowable signs.
Yeah, but the rest of the city does not.
Oh, okay.
So you, you could incorporate it right in this ordinance and it'd be similar to other industrial sign, you know, restrictions that other cities have. You can, you know, say, say the size of it, uh, can't be glowing. You could put, but we'd have to incorporate it in the draft of the ordinance if that's what we wanted to do. Cause it, it would be specific to, uh, this type of building.
Text only, no pictures or.
One foot by one foot.
Yeah, whatever.
I don't, that part I don't know. I mean, again, I don't mind a sign over a door or something like that, but.
Yeah.
Unlit.
Unlit.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say a size.
And is that the same, is the lighting the same for like, you know, like you said, the neon lighting? They could still maybe put like a strip of neon lighting around the top of the building or I don't think they will, but you're not, you just don't know. And this is our job to, you know, we can say people aren't going to do it, but when they do, then, you know, obviously we're not going to like it. So, um, what about?
Discreet.
I would say text only.
If you're saying a sign that's unlit.
I'm talking about lighting as well. Like, so you could have lighting on the building that's not part of the sign as well. Like how much, you know, you, you know, when you drive down Jefferson, what you see. Yeah. So decorative lighting perhaps, or like security lighting, fine, but.
Right, a decorative sign.
Not decorative or.
It's not overbearing.
Yeah. But then you have to be care. Three by five?
I'd say no more than a five foot sign or something, five by five.
I'm not the expert on that.
I mean, I.
But you do have to light the sign if you have it over the door. That's the, you know, so we can't, the sign itself wouldn't be lit, but. Yeah. Yeah, for the fire and yeah, yeah.
I don't mind them identifying their business. I mean, come on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say something like that.
Sure.
That's not too intrusive. He's winking at you.
Okay. And then I think, I don't think I had anything else. Nelson's going to bring up something that we chatted about real quick. Unless you're not going to, then I will. But, okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Nelson. Where's your microphone on?
A couple of items on page four. One is the annual fee. It doesn't necessarily say annual and item eight. Yeah. It says it'll be remain valid for one year and item nine.
It is.
Okay. So that'll be annual. The next question I had for the attorney, Anthony, would be, uh, item 10. Renewal of the permit can be granted or denied, but is there a list of acceptable, uh, you know, variances to grant or deny the applicant?
So what we would follow for that would be, hold on. I believe it was, uh.
Yeah.
Page 16, section six.
Thank you, mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all those factors, if they, well, they probably even, uh, yeah, 16, six. And then the factors before that as well. If they're not in compliance, if there's, you know, complaints about odor, if they're not in compliance with the state at that point, then they'd have, or we would have the right not to renew the license. I just don't want to put us in a legal, you know, situation where we're denying them and we're not covered.
Understood. We can clarify that area.
And then granting is going to be easy because they're state driven. So we accept them based on their state application.
Well, also they require state renewals too as well. So.
Okay.
State will have to renew them each year.
All right. Well, thank you. That's it for me, mayor.
All right. Thank you, councilman.
I have a dumb follow-up question.
Oh, no, go ahead.
What do we mean by annual? Is that, do we have a time period? Is it annually from when they apply and are approved? It's their own individual annual renewal?
It'd be their own individual.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anyone else have anything?
I'll be glad to get this done.
Now we solved it all. Solved all the world problems here. So, um, well, I guess, yeah, from Dean and Anthony, I say, what else do you need from us here? Microphone.
You should have sat up here.
It was a good catch. Be interviewing as a team.
Uh, I just want to get, make sure I got a clear consensus in particular for the area. Where do you guys want to go with this? Do you want to go all industrial like we talked about? Do you want to go industrial with the two areas? Or do you want to go the, the third area included of, um, the Kirkstra Park?
I would like to include the industrial parkway and then what we talked about before, west.
The early part that we talked about.
And in the Hoover area.
Okay.
Those three designated areas. That's it.
All right.
So I think option A, B, basically.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Cause that includes that corner of Fort and King. Inclusive of the DT property. Or the quarry, if you want to call it that.
It will not include.
Well, it, it does, but they're not going to build something in that quarry. We know that.
Right. But for the purpose. For the purpose of the zoning or, or for the ordinance, it will be included.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So does anyone have any?
Yeah.
Opposition?
No, I'm good.
So we're talking about the strip that I highlighted on the first thing.
Yeah. So I think it probably best summarizes east of Fort Street, west of West Jefferson.
Wait a minute. East of Fort.
West of West Jefferson in any I one or I two zone.
Pending state requirements.
Sure.
Yeah.
And then maybe you could just do one more final look at what impact that would have on neighborhoods or parks for us? That decision. Could do one last kind of review of that, but I think it sounds good.
Yeah, I don't see that it's infringing on any of those.
Yeah, just in case we missed anything, you know.
Well, so what I'll do for next step, because that's going to be in the zoning ordinance, we'll amend the zoning ordinance to, uh, incorporate that that's an approved area for this type of use. And then to make it as clear as we possibly can, we'll also do a map, highlight it with that area and then we can visually all see if that's the area you guys want. And so I'll present that next to council, uh, and the mayor, uh, for you to review. And then if we're good there, then we could do a first reading after that, get it in a final format and resolution.
I'm good.
Anthony, can you include that? Can we just go right to the first, uh, reading? Because you can make changes after the first reading. So I don't see why we need to, you know, like.
We could do that as well.
I feel like that would be better. Might as well. Maybe.
Does, uh, does it require going to the planning commission before we do that?
Change of the zoning likely, yeah.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make, just sort of mapping it out timeline here, timeline wise here. So.
So we'll get it to them and then.
Hopefully get it to them for the July meeting.
Right.
Then, yeah, maybe have something.
Yeah, maybe we can put it on them to study the, the portion and see if they come up with any potential, potential issues. And then that helps the whole situation anyway. I like that.
Cool. So yeah, I, I keep waiting to think of something that like, all right, what have we not covered here that immediately tomorrow, we're going to be like, oh crap. Nevermind, got to get everyone's.
There's a certain TV show on tonight.
It's not first reading yet, so there's still time. So if something comes up between now and then, we can always change.
Absolutely.
Good.
Cool. So I'd say Anthony, Dean, anything else you can think of that you need from us? Any? I can't think of any either, and that's what's giving me pause.
I would plan on having the draft to you, your next meeting for just to receive and refer to, um, planning.
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll hit planning and go from there.
Cool. All right. Anything, we'll just go around here. I don't remember where I started. Well, let's start with Scott and go this way here.
Happy Monday again.
All right. Happy Monday indeed, Trevor.
Yep, I'm all set. Thank you.
Rick? Nelson?
All set. Thank you.
Cool.
Good work.
Dean, Anthony, maybe anything? Public comment portion. I think I'll have to check in on the Zoom. If anyone on Zoom, uh, would like to speak, uh, please, uh, use either participants or reactions on the bottom of the Zoom feature to use the raise hand. I think we'll get you queued up. Please begin with your name and address. I ask you to direct all questions through me and that you limit your comment to five minutes. So give it just a second and see if we've got any comment. Or any hands for that matter. All right. See you none. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Move the support. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. We will adjourn this meeting at 7:41.
When's the next planning commission?